We'll be calling ourselves to order. Where's everybody standing? We'll do plebeian. I'm waiting for everybody here. A plebeian's legion through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, and undergone in the physical with liberty and justice. Roll call. Councilwoman Fletcher?
Here.
Councilwoman Clinton?
Here.
Mayor Fletcher?
Here.
The quarter of Simon. Councilman Bickers. Councilman Sander. Councilman Dally. Travis Kena. We did have a quorum. There it is. All right, next thing is the approval of the minutes from May twenty first. Anybody say anything?
I don't see anything.
Okay, somebody will make a motion. We approve the events, May twenty first?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we told motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second of the morning. All those in favor of saying five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered. Uh, the May twenty fourth financial statements, John?
If you take a look at the, um, financial statement, we had, uh, sorry. Income for the month of, uh, May of fifty-four thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Expenses for the month of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, for actually a surplus of two hundred, you know, fifty-four dollars for the month. Um, expenses, everything is running line. There's nothing really, um, out of the ordinary of the, you know, taxes. Um, BIA, um, on the expense side, on the receipt side, you will see the only thing really is, um, a larger BNO tax from Trastay Griffin for seventeen thousand, fifty-two dollars and nothing cents. Other than that, everything else is pretty much in line. If you have any questions?
Any questions about the financials? If not, we entertain a motion. They'd be approved as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Michael. We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nicole. All those in favor of saying five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered?
Motion.
All righty. Uh, old business, the new excavator and trailer, uh, has been purchased. It is at the sanitation plant. Uh, we are, uh, they did do some training and everything with it and, uh, uh, with it and also the, uh, uh, the new, uh, jetter. We're gonna make up a couple of forms just to, uh, document when it's ran, where it's at, at what addresses, things like that. We haven't been real great about all of keeping the addresses down, places we're going to and all that, so. We're gonna take care of that, so that'll be updated and be in service next week here. Uh, everybody's off the next two days here, so, uh, hopefully anybody through here at City Hall for two days. Come in, finish out Friday and go home. Uh, the Thrasher contract, uh, ask you to give the mayor authorization to sign on behalf of the town. Somebody wanna put that in the form of a motion to approve that Thrasher contract that we talked about last month?
Send it.
So move my John. Do we have a second? Second by Michael. All those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered? All righty. Uh, update to Rick meeting and, uh, order June thirteenth, regional governmental council. And, uh, a couple of things picked up on that is, uh, the Larry Conley Memorial Bridge up on the upper end, uh, they're gonna do a rehab sometime later on this year on that bridge, paint and all that. Uh, it's, it's in there like one, one and a half million dollars, so, uh, so that is going to, uh, be something that's taken care of, uh, this year. And then the, uh, the second thing was, uh, uh, Rick and, uh, told him we had the four thousand dollars that we got for the sidewalks and, and, uh, uh, work and everything there, so they're working on putting that together. And so we can go out to bids and everything on the preparation and everything. So those were the two things really that I brought up with Rick this past week, so, uh, for the town of M. So we get those. Uh, new business, uh, the new school or program. Let me just pass these out. This is a program, it's a, um, program that's been around for a few years. They actually called a few weeks ago. It's, uh, on work-based learning. It is for kids and everything. Uh, and the good thing about it is, is the, uh, the people that's, you know, got this going and everything, they'll actually send like, uh, life coaches in with them. Uh, they'll actually, uh, work with the kids here. So actually Adam or someone like that doesn't actually have to stay with them at any time. And, uh, so, uh, we thought the best thing, and I had Adam in here with me, and, uh, we thought the best thing would be, uh, taking care of, uh, you know, uh, sidewalks and things like that for painting, sorry, Ray. And, uh, being able to do that, so, uh, I'd like to ask for a motion that we, uh...
What, what's the age range of you?
Uh, I think you're anywhere from seventeen to twenty, twenty-one. And, uh, but, uh, and the kid, the coach would actually work with them, teach them, show them how to paint, things like that. So somebody's probably in there being held a paintbrush, just that.
Are they, um, like, right here in Canal County or from?
Yeah, yeah, between, uh, usually Charleston and Montgomery, they're set. And, but they'll, uh, bring this coach in with them and everything.
Do they, uh, bear the, like, insurance on this?
They cover all the workers' comp, the insurance, umbrella, it's under the, uh, state of West Virginia. So there is no liability for anticipating part of the, you know, as per. So I'll ask for a motion that we allow, uh, this group, new school scholars, to, uh, bring some kids in.
I'll make the motion and bring them in.
Okay, so we got a motion by Nicole. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor of saying five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered?
It's a win, wasn't it?
Yeah. So that's a pretty good party on high bottom. And Adam, he said, hey, I need some help, so, uh, so we're trying to do what we can. I've got also, um, some quotes here. C.R. Dameron. This is to reinstall the lights on the four poles down by the, uh, fishing pier and the, uh, park and playground area. Uh, those were actually taken down when we did the sanitation plant. I've had a couple of people look at this and everybody's telling me, well, we don't have a bucket truck or anything. So we had this C.R. Dameron, uh, he just paid some BNO tax. Uh, he put in the, uh, generator down there at the bank. And, uh, so, uh, to remove the existing lights off of four poles, he'll put in four new, uh, LED lights on the poles. And then actually he'll bring a bucket truck in and everything, cut back the shrubbery and everything from all around those lines and the poles itself. I told him that, you know, just lay all that there, we'll haul it away. Uh, and then also, uh, with the bucket truck fuel municipal permit fees, I told him we wouldn't have any there. Uh, but, um, hi- his total price is four thousand dollars. And a couple of people said that they thought that was a pretty good price. And, uh, I know, I couldn't get anybody to touch it before, so, uh, I'd like to see that get done. The police have actually said, hey, it's dark down there. So what's a pleasure?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the bid for four thousand dollars to actually reinstall and clear the lines from the trees, or the trees from the lines.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Michael. All those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered? Thank you. Uh, next, John, the question from a resident, settle due amount of municipal fees.
We have a resident that, uh, no longer lives here. She rented a house here. And her municipal fees, um, she is on the front door. Um, her balance due was two thousand, four hundred, twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Um, she is asking for a settlement amount. She is requesting that we cut that in half, which would be twelve, fifteen. Um, I'm telling you that out of the twenty-four, twenty-nine, thirty cents, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars of that is interest. So majority of that is interest.
One thousand one, yes?
Seven fifty-eight, seventy, seventeen fifty-eight, seventy. And I will also say, for the year twenty twenty-three, the last payment she made was July thirty-first. Twenty twenty-three, she paid about thirteen hundred dollars that year, last year. So she did make some payments on that, um, but she also quit paying in, um, July. July thirty-first, so.
She wanted to pay twelve fifty, so?
She's asking to cut that balance due in half. Told her I can't make that determination, that I would have to bring the council to see. I know what we had done before for...
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Um, we split the cost, we split the, um, interest with him. So if he owes two thousand in interest, we paid half and he paid half, I should say, so. In this case, you know, we're looking at approximately nine hundred dollars in interest, actually about eight.
Well, if we, if the interest is seventeen fifty, eight seventy, we're looking at about eight seventy to split that.
Yeah.
And then the difference between the twenty-four and the seventeen is seven, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. So they would pay the eight seventy plus the seven seventy-one if we did same thing we did for Mr. Campbell.
Right.
So with that being said, uh, she would owe us sixteen hundred and forty-one dollars. Which is what we had done on some others. Uh, we would split half of the interest and then they would pay the difference because that's her twenty-dollar bump. So the, the request should be for like sixteen hundred and forty-one bucks.
I mean, I think if we've done that before, we should probably be consistent.
Yeah, that's, that's what we've been consistent with. So you wanna put that in the form of a motion that we offer sixteen hundred and forty-one dollars as the payoff?
You offer the sixteen forty-one.
Okay, so we got a motion by Nicole. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. I think you will go for that.
Oh, still probably agree, I'd be very surprised if it's paid, but, um...
Yeah, okay, so we got the motion second for sixteen hundred and forty-one dollars. Uh, all those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered? Uh, approval of invoices, nothing? Personnel issues? I'm gonna mention, uh, that we, uh, had a, uh, an application from Christian Thomas Kessler, uh, from Simmons Creek. He has worked for us a couple of times on the, uh, uh, street department and, uh, uh, he's asking to come back to work. He would be available on July the first. Uh, I'd like to, uh...
But we'll say, when he worked for us, it was summer help, so it wasn't someone who we hired at Quaid, he was hired as summer help.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, let's hire him for summer help right now, and if he works out well, uh, he'd like to maybe see about a full-time job, so. So somebody will put that in form of a motion that we hire, uh, at the, uh, part town pay?
Motion to hire.
Okay, motion, uh, uh, Michael, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nicole. All those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
He, um, Adam and them really liked him. They didn't want to see him leave last year. Um, and keep in mind, we have not hired summer help at all, so this will really...
This is Dave Kessler's grandson.
Oh, I've seen that.
He was a hard worker last, last summer.
He was a good one. Okay, um...
CHR.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's...
Yeah, for him.
Yeah. All righty, the, uh, next thing you got is the, uh, police department report. Does anybody have anything there that? I don't know if you've looked at it yet or not.
Hey, I know that our one gentleman on Canal Street, Dave, I know that the sheriff, they were looking at releasing him. Is he still in jail today?
He, he didn't get released.
He did not?
He actually went for magistrate last week. He, uh, I saw a note Friday evening from a prosecutor. And he had actually stated that, uh, he feels like he still needs some help. And that he doesn't feel like that he should be released.
Well, hopefully...
So needless to say, they denied the bond and didn't do anything, uh, cause, uh, the call I got on Thursday was, is that they were gonna release him under a PR bond and send him home. So I'm glad right now that they haven't done that.
I know they probably haven't charged you, but it's, was he open to getting help, like, isn't it?
Uh, not really. He thinks he needs to go to a facility. And that hasn't been done yet. That's where I had the call with the, uh, DHHR people, didn't go too well.
Yeah.
Uh, I think I called him a couple of names. And, uh, so then I called the governor's office on Friday, so.
Well, he's called him a couple... He's called him a couple of names, I gotta do.
Looking into it now. So, uh, we'll see what the governor's office comes back, and they're supposed to be talking to DHHR and making the things right that, uh, I think I opposed and then had some statements.
It's a shame that someone who probably needs help.
It is, yeah.
And, uh, you just cannot get out.
Anybody have anything about the report? Anything, see anything else? If not, we'll move forward. Uh, next thing we got then is items from the mayor. Let me tell you a couple of things that's going on. Tomorrow, West Virginia Water is coming back to town. Uh, and, uh, they're gonna look at some new water projects here in Bell, replacing some lines. And we're gonna be up on, uh, River View Drive in the morning. And they're gonna put some new lines in from there all the way around towards Sixth Street and Seventh Street. And then up around to Thirteenth Street, and then connect some lines into the large lines that go up through Bell. So, uh, supposed to meet with them at nine o'clock. So I told them, I said, well, we're working on sewer and storm drain work, and I said it'll work, it'll work out well, so. That way we can get that done and all that, so. Uh, the excavator is in, and I think I mentioned that earlier. But, uh, it is ready to go, so we're, uh, we're ready to use it if we need it, so, uh, we've got that and, uh, things are, things are good there. Uh, I think it's... Did I mention Larry Conley Bridge and all that?
Yep.
I think I'm good. All right, so the next thing's item from council. Uh, Nicole?
Attorney.
Huh?
Attorney.
Oh, town attorney, I'm sorry, babe.
Only thing I have is that, uh, four-day request. I prepared a draft response. The first item, uh, looks to be okay, uh, the budget. Uh, we could, uh, if we can prepare that in, uh, electronic format.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, send that to them along with our response. The second part contains a request for a lot of information that's personal. And I don't think we need to, uh, respond, and I'll put that on the exemption for that. If it meets with their vote of approval, we can get that out in the next pair or two.
Yeah, I'll get that out, um...
I mean, you could, uh, if you wanna use my letterhead, that's fine, if you just wanna cut most...
No, I'll scan it in with the digital, um, uh, budget, and then I'll also find it on Superstate.
You, and that's, uh, what I can do is, uh, I can, uh, sign a letter, and, or I can sign that letter and leave it there, and you can scan it.
I'll have you sign it, it's perfect.
I'd be good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right. That it, Ray?
Yeah.
Okay, items from council, Nicole?
I got a couple things, or a few things.
All right.
Um, we have the street shower tonight. Well, the kids asked about coming to ice. We will do that again. I think we should do that again.
Okay.
So with that, I was also thinking other dates for street shower, cause all we did was through June. We didn't do anything in July.
Okay.
So we wanna just rotate like that Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday again? Okay, for July?
Yeah.
Not sure when.
We might miss July fourth.
Well, we'll miss that July second that week.
Cause July fourth is Thursday, huh?
We could do it the second, that's the Tuesday. Cause we're on Thursday next week, so that would make it Tuesday the next week.
Let's just skip that week.
Okay.
Go, go a week out.
Okay.
Cause we need some people over the vacation.
Um, so...
When you wanna do the council?
Well, I was thinking probably do it like for one, one of the last ones.
Okay. You go call him, see if you can get him?
Maybe shoot for that last week, July first of August.
You go call him?
Yeah, I'll call him and see if I can get him.
Okay. Call him, see what he says.
And then my second thing is we always wanna put stuff in these empty lots, and I wanna throw out the idea of maybe a pickleball court.
I was talking to John about that. I did talk to Nitro today. Nitro did build one. Uh, it cost twenty-seven thousand dollars for the, uh, uh, the cement. And then they put about another ten thousand dollars in it with the, uh, paint and the striping and all that. So they've got about thirty-seven thousand dollars, is what City Nitro had.
That's why I looked at day like thirty to thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, so.
I, I think if we do that, I mean, I, I'm all for that. These pockets could be right now, but I was telling Dave that I still think we need to at least put a basketball rim down there somewhere too.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of the kids like that, and they don't have anywhere to play, when, especially when there's not open gym. I, I'm not saying we have to have a full court, but if we could do...
If a half court?
Yeah. I think that'd be good for the kids. The only thing that concerns me is, I, growing up, I lived beside a basketball court. And sometimes eleven o'clock at night, you hear boom, boom, boom. And, um, there are some evenings we don't have a police officer on duty, if you live there. Um, I, I say again, I still think we have to have some for the kids.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna deter away from that, uh, anyway.
And no matter where we put on these empty lots, we're probably gonna have that same situation no matter where it goes.
It's frustrating, but I'd rather have the kids playing basketball than...
See, they give the basketball, only since they felt grateful, did they take the...
There was a little portable basketball room out there, but I think they, yeah, they took down the basketball court there years ago when they don't have, um...
Not even paying attention for that, we'll play around.
The one they got on the other end, they keep locked up.
Oh, yeah.
So nothing you can get in there. Uh, so that's, uh, let me go back and, and relook at the asphalt. And, uh, see if we can do asphalt and all that on that lot down there. And I was thinking about the boat property. So trying to do it there and keep it away from the, uh, uh, the ash property up there in the riverbank, though that plus we talked about putting the, uh, parking for vehicles and everything up there for the, uh, kayak canoe launch. And that was one other thing I had. I did talk to Occidental Chemical today. And now they've changed their mind again. Now they say they're gonna deed that property to us. Uh, but it might be three or four months after, so, uh, uh, but at least it sounds like they reversed what they were gonna do. They first thought they were just gonna lease it to us. And then there's also a plan for the park area and all that, and, uh, we will probably end up with that one at least. So, uh, but that'll probably be sometime next year, is what they're saying now, so. So I'll have somebody look at that asphalt and everything. And see what we can do there, and then we'll probably have to go out and try to find some money, uh, and do that, so.
We could use any of that, they...
Uh?
I'm already getting, I know it's...
Hey, okay?
Yeah, I think, I don't think you knew, uh...
Yeah.
That's probably not a municipal name, John, you might like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
But I don't think it's a, I don't think it's something you can use.
Okay.
Think probably to get in and see the, uh, local commissioners. And, uh, yeah, we got six thousand coming now for the festivals. So we'll see if we can pick up some more, so. So I'll work on that. Anything else, Nicole?
No, I will do.
Michael?
I'll do that.
John? Ethan? So motion for visitors to address council?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Nicole, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael, all those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so ordered? So, all right, anybody have anything? Thank you all, yeah, for the, uh, you know, the beautification and the wall and all that. Mark got you the measurements?
Yeah, we got my measurements, but I, I was expecting Mark to be here.
He's, he's gone on vacation.
Okay, um, so I was expecting the quote.
Everybody's out.
I was expecting the quote. I thought we'd get the quote tonight, so, um, I, I follow up on that tomorrow and find out why we're gonna get the quote.
Oh, okay. Was he supposed to give it to us to get?
He was supposed to quote it. Yeah, we gave him the measurements.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know we were getting the quotes tonight, cause Mark said he was not planning on being here, so.
Okay, well, I, I, I know he has the, the measurements. I know the artist has the measurements.
Okay.
So I thought we were getting the quote, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask him tomorrow, see what we can get.
Cause Mark mentioned to me, I guess, when you all talked to him, said we would have to kinda put a primer on that to begin with?
Well, that was the beginning of it, but, um, now he's talking about doing something, and I, I don't know if we'd have to put something on the wall. But he's actually gonna put the, the mural on something else.
On the canvas and glue?
Something like, yeah.
See, that's what the people told me downtown, is what they do.
Yeah, yeah.
They actually draw it on a canvas, and then they take it up and glue it up.
Yeah, and he thought that would be better for our situation.
Yeah.
So, um, anyway, I'll follow up with him and find out.
The ones I talked to downtown, that's pretty much what they do to all the buildings downtown.
Okay, well, they seem like they, they only look pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, they look good, I'm like...
Yeah, they look great, don't they? So...
They are celebrating.
So...
We'll, we'll see, we'll see what they...
Yeah, yeah, we'll see what happens.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, okay.
And?
Just some small, some of the flags are tattered.
Yeah.
Are you making a note of it?
Working on it.
Thank you.
My wife said the same thing.
Yeah, I didn't notice it last time.
Yeah, we have about three come down with the last wind and everything else. They put one on my porch, one on someone else's, and one up city hall. Yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're working on some of those now.
Thank you.
Purchase some new holders, and, uh, but we, we're gonna purchase some flags too, just, uh, yeah.
Can you talk about the one on the poles?
The one on the poles, yeah, and if you can maybe find some that's for the missing, cause there's like gaps missing too, buy some more.
Well, that's some that the holders...
The holders broke, that's what I thought, mhm.
Everything is. All righty, is that it? Uh, I don't need an executive session.
Uh, yeah, I forgot to take it off.
Yeah.
I just, I copied, I used the same agenda and I didn't take it off.
All righty, so next thing is adjournment. Somebody wanna make that form of a motion?
I think it's for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Nicole? All those... Yeah, Nicole, all those in favor of sitting five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so, let me see, seven thirty.